And welcome Winthrop to the Winthrop Town Council meeting of August 4th, 2020. This meeting will be held remotely and the call-in number so that all the public can participate in our public comment periods and during public hearing, even though we have no public hearing tonight. The call-in number is 312-626-6799. And the ID number after you call in is 874-509-53951. Okay, please call us. We're going to hear from you during public comment. All right, I will now call the meeting to order of the Winthrop Town Council. Can we please have the Pledge of Allegiance? And Councilor Farino, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Denise, would we please have a roll call?
Councilor Ruggiero.
Here.
Council Flahcutt. She was here.
She's on mute.
Okay, Council DeMarco.
Here.
Council Christopher.
Yeah.
I'm here Denise.
Council Honan.
Here.
Council Farino.
Here.
Council LaConte. Vice President Littieri.
Yep.
President Boncory.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the July 21st, 2020 meeting as circulated. A motion by Council Littieri, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council DeMarco. Is there any discussion on the minutes? Any amendments? Anyone want to be heard? Hearing none? All those in favor, please take a roll call vote.
Council Ruggiero.
Yes.
Council Flahcutt.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Littieri.
Yes.
President Boncory.
Yes.
Thank you.
My minutes are approved. General information and recommendations. Just under general information and recommendations, I want to let everybody know, we're still in a state of emergency in Massachusetts and also here in Winthrop. The mask order is still in effect and we ask everybody to please wear a mask when you're out and about or trying to go into any of the establishments in the town of Winthrop and when you can't be six feet from people outside. I noticed the beach this year, this weekend, our Euro Beach was much less crowded than the weekend before, so I think some people are beginning to understand that you can't have 2,000, 3,000 people in one area. There were still a couple of hundred people on the beach, but they seem to be much more spread out. I want to thank the young people in Winthrop and the parents for hopefully informing their families that it's not a good idea to be together in crowds. Large crowds would, you know, outbase on the beach. The parking might have done something about that too, the effect that we put in the pilot program, but I was very happy to see that it was not as as mobbed and unsafe on Euro Beach this week. As far as citations, we have three citations from the council today. I'd like to find where did he put them, who read them. We have too many packages. Denise, do you have them in front of you?
Did you get the envelope out of your mailbox?
Yes, I did. Were they in that envelope?
I can read them, I have them.
I have them.
You have them, okay.
Yes. The first citation, I am sorry, is Town of Winthrop Town Council Citation. And it reads, "Be hereby known that the Town of Winthrop and the Winthrop Town Council hereby offers its appreciation to Sister Jane Iannacconi, Sister of Providence. On behalf of the residents of the Town of Winthrop and the many people you have personally assisted during your 25 years at St. John the Evangelist Church, with your involvement in several ministries, you will be missed, especially by the so many children that have grown up with you and by your guidance. We extend our most sincere gratitude for your hard work and dedication to all that you do and all that you were involved with. You are a very special person who will not be forgotten in our community. We offer you nothing but the best in all of your future endeavors. And this is given the Forte of August, 2020, Winthrop, Massachusetts, signed by Philip Boncory Esquire, council members Richard Farino, James Littieri, Nicholas LaConte, Robert DeMarco, Barbara Flahcutt, Peter Christopher, Stephen Ruggiero, and Tracy Holmes." The second citation is to Gerald Jerry DeFranza, and I'm not going to read the entire thing, but it's on behalf of the residents of Town of Winthrop and the many people you have helped with disabilities, especially for your hard work on Bill S. 497, an act improving hearing aids for persons with sensory impairedness. We extend our most sincere gratitude for your hard work and so on. Again, signed by the entire council. And the third one is for Ellen Nickerson. And it be it known that the Town of Winthrop and the Town Council offer its appreciation to Ellen Nickerson of the Winthrop Public Library. On behalf of the residents of the Town of Winthrop and the many employees you have worked with in the past 49 years, we extend our most sincere gratitude for your hard work and dedication to the Winthrop Public Library and wish you well on your resignation. We offer you nothing but the best in all your future endeavors." Again, signed by the council. We have no public hearings today, but we will go right into public comment. And again, public comment number is 312-626-6799. And the ID code is 874-509-53951. We have public comment. We should receive that we have 47 participants.
Yes, we have Vinnie Krasman first.
Are you on, Vinnie?
I am, can you hear me okay?
Hey, Vinnie.
And we also got your letter, Vinnie. Is that what you want to talk about, Coach Fusillo?
I do, I just wanted to reach out to the council and give a few remarks on the item before you tonight regarding Coach Fusillo. I think I want to start with just letting folks know kind of what my background is on Miller Field and my experiences with Coach Fusillo. First, as you probably know, I co-chair the Miller Field Committee with Jim Littieri and have done so since that started about two years ago. I also chair the Viking Pride Foundation, so I'm pretty familiar with a lot of the stuff that has gone on at the field and the namings, excuse me, with the SBAC in the school. So I, you know, I've spent a lot of time working on a lot of these issues. Couple things I just want to address. First, the timing on why to name now. I think it's important that we try to do this all at once with regards to a dedication. I think that, you know, Mr. Miller, obviously being one of the first veterans of World War II killed, very important to rededicate that field to him and to recognize his service. And I also would like to recognize Coach Pat McGee, who the track has already been named after at our grand opening. And I think it'd be great to recognize Coach Tony Fusillo for his efforts at, as a coach and as a teacher at Winthrop High School. I think that the other issue to bring up is the authority to name the field. Right now, that authority rests with the Town Council. There's been a lot of back and forth about who has the right or the authority to name things at the field right now. That field is solely in the possession of the council at this point, and the council has the authority to make that decision. So I would strongly encourage the council to go ahead and do that. Just going directly to talk a little bit about Coach. I was a player for Coach Fusillo. I also managed several of his teams and was always involved in everything that was going on with his programs. And I can tell you, there is no more dedicated coach and public servant that this community has seen. His hours were generally 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM during the season and maybe just a little bit reduced during the off-season. He has done things that just go so well above and beyond the norm for a teacher and coach that he is very, very fitting for this, for this dedication to him. One thing that a lot of people don't know about Coach Fusillo is his personal relationship that he has with many of his former players and for that matter, many of his former students. You know, it's interesting when you talk to some female athletes that weren't necessarily football players, but were in Coach Fusillo's classes about how much of an impact Coach had on them as athletes just being in the school and folks that were in physical education that may not have been the most, you know, experienced in that type of thing. Coach always went out of his way to make everyone feel welcome and involved. And the interesting thing that always comes to mind about Coach is when I go up to visit the Fort Banks graves and you look around and you see gold helmets on some of the gravestones, Coach actually goes and puts the helmets on the players' gravestones to recognize his relationships and what they, what those people have committed to as students in Winthrop High School. And it's amazing to me that, you know, he takes that time and dedication, even after all these years, to recognize his former players. So if you ever are up there, you'll notice them and I think that that's important to look at. So I don't want to take up all the time, I'm going to, I'm going to yield and I thank you for the time you gave me.
Thank you, Vinnie. And I want to remind everybody that's on public comment that we have a three-minute time limit on public comment. And I want to reiterate, we have gotten many letters in support of Coach Fusillo and they've been from both men and women, so what Stephen said was correct. Moving on, next.
We have Mark D'Ambrosio.
Hi, Mark.
Hey, Mark.
Mark, you there?
Yes, sir, can you hear me?
I can hear you and I have your very long letter. I appreciate reading it.
Yeah, thank you very much and I'll, and I'll thank you for your time and look to keep it under three minutes.
Thank you, Mark.
You know, just to, just to let everyone know, I was happy to be a part of a petition for Coach Fusillo, which has, you know, over 2,000 signatures from the letter, just to touch upon and reiterate some of the things that Vinnie had said. Coach Fusillo was a coach, teacher, administrator at Winthrop High School, born and raised in Winthrop. He coached for 35 years, was the head coach for 21 seasons. In those 21 seasons, his record was 128, 88, and 1, and he won four Northeastern Conference titles, four Super Bowls, and retired after a perfect season. You know, interesting tidbits, he was 19 and 2 versus Revere on Thanksgiving and never lost at Revere. And this is with a team that was historically one of the smallest programs in the conference, if, in the state, really. He's inducted into the Massachusetts Hall of Fame, a member of the Winthrop High School Athletic Hall of Fame, and he graduated, excuse me, he didn't graduate, he had three Winthrop Viking athletes. His son Anthony went on, and this with his wife Carolyn, his son Anthony went to Tufts and held many passing records at Tufts. James was an all-scholar quarterback who was a captain of that perfect season in 2006. And Jenny was a star track and field athlete that competed at Notre Dame. The influence of Coach Fusillo is reflected in the coaches and players that were, that came close to him. His staff that I was fortunate to play for in the early 90s had Ben Arusione, who took, who had positions at Curry College and was their athletic director there. Mark Pittsafery went on to coach at Merrimack College and Curry College. Future head football coaches that he graduated included John Parsioli, Bobby Nimblett, Mike DeFleece. Other Winthrop sports teams coaches were Jim Gillis and David Guffey. And Anthony and James are following in his footsteps coaching and Coach Fusillo, obviously Coach, current head coach, John Cattigan. Real quick, in 21 seasons, he graduated seven future college football captains. Captains at Bentley University, Boden College, Tufts College, Tufts University, Colby University, Curry College, and Endicott College, which sort of spoke to the quality of person and hard work and leadership that he instilled in everyone. And out of the 2,000 signatures that we put together, I thought there were some comments that I'd like to read quickly and I'll be done. Stacy McKenzie, couldn't think of a better coach, teacher, or man for this field house to be named after. Best of luck, Coach, even though I didn't have an athletic bone in my body. Marie Anasio, as a Winthrop High School graduate and football cheerleader, I saw firsthand the impact Coach Fusillo had on our teams and community. I feel this is more than fitting. Rebecca DiStacy, such a great coach and mentor, he absolutely deserves this. C. Laloa Wong, the life lessons Coach has shared with us in our short time in Winthrop has stayed with me and helped me as a person and parent. To have his...
Mark, I know you got 2,100 signatures, I hope you're not going to read all of them.
Nope, I got two more.
Make them quick.
All right, and Nancy Lane, I cannot think of anyone who deserves this more than Coach Fusillo, his dedication. The Winthrop football program is legendary, as is the love and respect that his players showed. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mark. Next.
We, we have Julia Wallace.
Julia, are you there?
Yes, I am here, can you hear me?
How are you, yes?
Great, so I just put in the chat, I came in a little late, is this general public comment or a specific?
Yes, it is.
Okay, just making sure. Yeah, so I just wanted to call in a couple things real quick. The first thing is regards to the item on tonight's agenda about the sort of reorganization of the Transportation Advisory Committee dissolving or disbanding and sort of merging with TSCAC. And just wanted to publicly voice my support for that as the former Chair of Transportation Advisory Committee, that I think ultimately this can be an even more powerful committee by combining their scopes as long as there's clear communication and conditions so that the folk, the individual focuses of each committee don't get lost. There were many times where we did collaborate on things like, you know, pulling data from the police department for our traffic analysis or, you know, trying to not reinvent the wheel knowing that TSCAC had been around a lot longer, but sometimes it was hard to bridge that gap, there was a bit of divide. So I think by merging the committees, it can be even more effective so long as if there's a clear purpose of the combining of the goals. So just wanted to, yeah, publicly support that, looking forward to hopefully being, I guess I'm having a hard time letting go because that committee was kind of my baby and I want to make sure that it transitions well and doesn't lose.
I saw all your recommendations and they're going to be going over to the committee that's going to be drafting it, we'll be going to alternate ordinance for drafting. So all of your comments that you sent and ideas will be going with it.
Excellent. Yeah, another thing I just wanted to give a shout out to DPW for doing a great job this summer on the Belle Isle Marsh Ecology Park maintenance. I think I've called in before with expressing some frustration, we've had trouble with the maintenance and, you know, how it's been mowed or not mowed. And I've really noticed them taking a strategic approach this summer to approaching, you know, really attacking the invasives and keeping it look beautiful and accessible. And clearly, clearly there's a strategy, I think it's Susanna, I can't remember her name, but her last name, but I just wanted to give a shout out about that as a neighbor on Morton Street that I really appreciate how well that park is being taken care of now.
Thank you, Julia.
Yeah, so, and the last thing I just wanted to say, I'm sure Austin will be addressing this in his report, but as far as the library closure and staff layoffs, I just hope that there's some more communication because there's a lot of confusion flying around in the community and I think just an official statement of what's happening and what the reopening is would be, would be helpful. I was really moved by the library staff's letter in the transcript last week and hope that, that they have a chance to be heard and recognized.
Thank you, Julia, and thank you for the work you did in getting the bus sign put up. And we have signs on the bus things and I think it's attributed solely to you, so thank you very much.
Yeah, something so trivial, but yet so rewarding to see those signs, so something shiny and new. I wrote a letter for the transcript, maybe it'll even get printed.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Do we have someone else?
There's two phone callers and I'd just like to share that if they hit star nine, that will trigger the raise your hand feature on the phone. I am going to click over to John Morgan though, just to see if he has... Mr. Morgan, do you have any public comment?
Yes, I do, Larissa.
Okay.
Good evening, council, and my name is John Morgan, I'm in precinct four. I would really like to thank you for that citation for Jerry DeFranza. He is well deserving of it and I hope everyone has a good night, thank you.
I hope you get more sentences about what happens later in the meeting, John. Next.
There's one more phone caller, I don't know if they're, they have the ability to press the star nine feature, but I will ask. Caller with the last number, 663, do you have any public comment? I'm going to take that as a no.
Is there anyone else on?
Yep, somebody with the login name of Administrator.
It's a good one. Hello?
Administrator.
Can you hear me?
Yes, who's this?
This is Rose, Veteran Services.
Oh, Rose, how are you?
Good, how you doing? I'm also the chairperson of the Memorials Committee and I ask Council President Boncory that you remind our residents that all memorial dedications, all dedications of town property must go through the Memorials Committee.
Rose, I will read that part of our rules later on in the meeting.
Okay, I'll stand by and wait till I can, I know there is at least one committee member who will be calling in. I don't know if she's on now or if she's going to wait.
I did receive a, an email from Mary Lou Osborne asking that we send any appointments to the Memorials Committee. I received that about an hour ago.
Okay, I will stand by then and listen and wait and hear what everybody has to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
No, I do not see any other hands up.
All right, moving on.
One hand just went up, sir, sorry.
Hello?
Anthony?
Hi guys, can you hear me, this is Anthony Decato.
Hey Anthony, how are you doing?
Doing great, I hope all of you are well. Just like to say good evening, council, my name is Anthony Decato. I was raised in Winthrop my whole life and graduated Winthrop High in 2002. Last three years, I've been embedded over in California for Apple and Facebook as a consultant where I currently reside. I personally don't think I would be here or where I am without my experiences with Coach Fusillo throughout the years. He obviously leaves an impact on people that they come back to their roots from everyday life to express how important this is. I believe this reason so many have signed and are present tonight for this is a culmination of his involvement in Winthrop High in both athletics and teaching, dedication within the Winthrop community, and his tutelage to countless years of graduating classes prepping for the next step. I consider Coach a mentor and a very good friend and look forward to our dear future catch-ups of coffee down the Winthrop Center when I return home for good. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else on public comment? Hearing none? We'll move to correspondence, we've received numerous correspondence on Coach Fusillo. I have a stack of letters here and some of them were from Stephen Bigford, Christian D'Ambrosio, Shannon Pelos, Shannon Riley Pelos, of course, Mark D'Ambrosio you heard from. I also heard from Julie Barry and, you know, Capobianco today from the school committee who were talking about Coach Fusillo and wanting to let people know that he was concerned. I had a conversation probably just before this meeting with the chairman of the school committee, Brian Perrin, who was supporting Andy Fusillo's naming of the building. However, he was concerned that people got the wrong impression at last night's school committee meeting, but there was a moratorium that was put forward by the school committee when the building was first started, that the school committee would not do any naming or renaming. And I guess the subcommittee policy last night confirmed that vote in subcommittee and it was not anything that was against any person who was, or persons who may be named in the future, but it was a policy situation. And I wanted to clarify that. So we also received communications on the bus line and we received a communication from Carol Fassella, who was a resident, who was talking about the pilot program and she was hoping that people from Winthrop could park at Point Shirley. And I believe the way we passed the pilot program is anyone with a Winthrop sticker or anyone with a Winthrop plaque, I can park in Winthrop anywhere in the point or anywhere else in Winthrop. As long as you have a Winthrop sticker or a Winthrop visitor's pass, you can park in Point Shirley. I think there was a little confusion in her letter, she thought that she was not going to be allowed to park there, but she is. Are there any other communications that you have, Denise?
No, I received no more.
Okay, I think that's all of them, let's move on to committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Anything from SBAC or Miller Field?
Well, I, we haven't had meetings, but I could give you updates on SBAC. There hasn't been a full committee meeting, but there has been some subcommittee meetings regarding the tennis courts, the remodeling of the tennis courts and the parking area around it. There's some preliminary sketches, and very preliminary, but showing sidewalks going around down Ocean View, around to Main, and the preliminary drawings have parking increasing from 41 to 51 spaces. There could be, that number will probably end up in the, in the high 40s, so there should be a plus situation in terms of parking. I know the subcommittee's been very happy to work with the school members who are very involved with the tennis to get their input. And as far as Miller Field goes, I know we're still waiting on a few small things concerning fencing, which should be addressed in the next couple of weeks and still waiting, I believe, to, for the subcommittee to meet with the golf club, that I think the town manager's going to try to help facilitate a meeting there, is my understanding, to get some concrete ideas set in stone as far as a golf shed. And I believe is in terms of the, the dog park, I think the town manager is also working on possible other funding sources to help us make sure we have the facility we want at both the golf shed and the, and the dog park and, but that is it. We are waiting again for a dedication, as Vinnie said earlier, we would love to be able to include the, the naming of the new field house as part of that dedication of, rededication of Miller Field. And that's all I have right now, if not president.
Okay, thank you very much. And just in your last comment, it's my understanding that there are no sports going to be held until at least September 14th.
Correct.
So there is some time to do anything that we need to do before opening that stadium. All right.
And also, just on behalf of the Miller Field Committee, we're extremely happy and, well, obviously we're proud of the, the recent graduates and extremely happy with the schools and the school committee for all their hard work, the athletic director for being able to, to have a full ceremony down there. The cleanliness of the field was impeccable, we're extremely proud of them for that and just again, extremely proud of the graduates for all their accomplishments and future endeavors.
Thank you, I agree, it went off without a hitch, it was very good. Moving on to town manager's report. Moving on to town manager's report. Austin, you ready?
Everyone, hopefully this works all right. I'm on a mobile side, powered in my house. And a tree just fell down outside of my backyard, so living in nature. So I'll try to speak quickly and hit on, try to hit on things as quickly as I possibly can for everyone. First, public on Monday through Friday, I believe, in the mornings. Larissa Wojcik can help direct anyone to the hours that they're open if they need. We got an update on local aid and I would like Anna Friedman to unmute herself and just give a quick update on what we know to, to the state.
Thanks, Austin. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. So Vinnie's on local aid. The state still does not have a approved budget for FY twenty-one, but they did approve a three-month interim budget that I believe runs through October. They also appear to have voted on a provision that would allow them to go back into formal session later in the year to vote on a budget once they feel able to do that. However, they did come to a, an agreement, a resolution on numbers for local aid so that municipalities can finalize their planning for the year. So our numbers are better than what we had been sort of guided to anticipate, so that's good. Our chapter seventy number is two hundred sixty-five thousand, one hundred fifty-seven dollars above what was in the final budget approved by the town council. And the unrestricted government aid was three hundred thirty-five thousand, six hundred thirty-eight dollars and fifteen cents above what was in the final budget approved by town council. So in light of the fact that the FY twenty-one budget for the town of Winthrop assumes a transfer of seven hundred fifty thousand dollars from our rainy day fund to afford the increases that were in the budget. What we, what Austin and I are recommending and will file a motion with the council at the next meeting is to lower that transfer by the, by that aggregate amount of money that we are receiving above and beyond what we had been anticipating for local aid to mitigate that transfer from our rainy day fund. A couple of reasons to do that that I'll be brief on. One is that we are likely to have a call with our rating agencies in September for some upcoming bond issues that we have this fall. To be able to demonstrate to them that we are immediately meaning ourselves as much, you know, off the use of one-time revenues as much as we can. We'll go a long way for us hopefully maintaining our bond rating. If we receive a downgrade in any way, that would be absolutely devastating to the town's budget at this point. The second reason is that we also, we don't know, it's only one month into the fiscal year. We're not sure yet how our revenues are going to be looking. We expect that those things will continue to be slow, the revenues will continue to be slow in light of the ongoing COVID nineteen pandemic. So we think reducing that, reducing that, that rainy day fund appropriation by that amount of local aid, what we can do prior to setting our tax rate for calendar year twenty-one, so we can do that over the next couple of months. But that will go a long way to stabilizing our budget and so it will ensure that we don't have a stake of a hole to dig out of and going into FY twenty-two. So the aggregate amount of those two, which I just realized I didn't say, is six hundred thousand, seven hundred ninety-five dollars. So it wouldn't eliminate the fact that we are drawing down on our rainy day fund, but it would eliminate of the majority of those funds. And that will be up to the council to decide if you would like to make that change in terms of reducing our rainy day fund transfer. And we'll have a motion at the next council meeting for that, for all of your consideration.
Thank you, Anna.
Oh, I forgot to mention one thing that I should just get out ahead of. Typically in previous years in a normal year, when we receive additional chapter seventy money, we absolutely recommend that that go to our, the Winter Public Schools to increase their appropriation. This year, because we are using our rainy day fund money to afford any increases, we do not have that recommendation. We've been working really closely with the superintendent and we'll continue to do so to make sure that the school has all resources it needs to fulfill its, its after-school plans consistent with the guidelines that are out by the state and the work that the school has done, the tremendous work that the school has put in to put forward that plan. So we are, we will make sure that the school has resources that it needs to fulfill those plans. We have substantial resources that they have worked out through the CARES Act. And so we're working very closely with the superintendent to get all of those costs in order. And so that is one reason, one very big reason why that in addition to the fact that we used one-time rainy day fund money to pay for the increase, that we would not adhere to our typical recommendation to change the school's appropriation for the year. Thank you.
Thank you, Vinnie. Austin?
Thanks, Anna. Next up, I would like Meredith Hurley to give a quick update concerning COVID.
Hey, everybody. How are you? So to give you, to give you an update on our most recent cases, we've had, we've had two additional reported today. One just came in, so it wasn't officially reported yet. So that brings our total to three hundred and six confirmed cases with twenty-four deceased, thirteen isolated, and two hundred and sixty-nine recovered. Some positive, which I am definitely seeing a slowing from what we saw in July. I also wanted to point out, we've all been hearing a lot about percent positive rates. So our percent positive rate that was reported on July twenty-ninth is now the lowest it's been since COVID, since the percent positive rate was first started being reported, which was at the end of May. So we are at a three point four one percent positive rate currently here in this, in this town. So the demographics from, you know, and it's, it's a short amount of time to really just compare July to August, but definitely in the last two weeks of July, we've seen a, a spreading out of the age demographics, whereas it was more concentrated in those under the age of twenty around the time of July, say, fourth to the twentieth. Now I'm seeing a more even spread amongst all age demographics. And that's kind of, that's kind of where we're at. Definitely the next big thing that we are working very diligently on is assessing what Desi has put together and comparing that with DPH recommendations so that we can, so that we can support the schools as best as possible as they are walking through the reopening process. I know that they met last night and, and voted on what the, what the model was going to be. And so I've been meeting consistently with the nurses together as a team to walk through different scenarios and how that would be addressed. And if there's a need for policies and procedures in place, that would be more specific to our community. If anybody has any questions?
Meredith, I, I got one question. I've noticed that in the last couple of days, there's, there's been a couple more COVID cases that have been reported. But yet the isolation number, and that to me says active cases, that number has been going down. Does that mean that they have been reported a week or two after the fact and that they've already recovered?
For a few of them, I've had two or three cases that once they're reported have already been cleared of isolation. And that's because of what I, what we've been seeing with the inconsistencies with testing.
Yep.
Is that for some of, you know, we're aware that East Boston or really any facility, not to just, you know, call out East Boston, neighborhood health center, any facility that's using Quest right now. The test results are being, the test, the testing is being prioritized to the states that are spiking currently. And since Massachusetts is still on that list that we're doing so well, where our, our test, our test samples are being prioritized.
Okay, that makes sense. So, so, but that isolation number is the number we need to keep in mind in terms of total active cases in the town, correct? So the fact that that's going down, that's, that's a very good sign.
That's a very good sign.
Yep.
Thank you, Meredith. Next up, Steve Call is going to give a quick update about the Center Business District project. Steve, if you could unmute yourself.
Good evening, everybody. So work continues on Bartlett Road, on the sewer installation, sewer main installation. And we have a second crew currently on coming out of the rink parking lot and working up Pauline Street toward Hagman Road for the drain work. The drain work is, is a large diameter pipe that you'll see scattered kind of on the roadway. It does take up a lot of space, unfortunately, hard to store. We're hoping to have that in the ground as quickly as possible. Will be, that crew will be working down towards French Square. Then there is some work within the temporary parking lot itself. And then they'll continue up Jefferson to the intersection of Jefferson and Putnam. That's at least a three-week look ahead. The drain work, like I said, is pretty significant. We hope to be done with Bartlett in the next couple of weeks as well. And then that sewer main crew will redeploy on Water Main on Carter's Park Road and Somerset Ave. That's essentially it on the Center Business District.
Even, can you hear that noise in the background?
I don't hear any noise, no.
Okay, I think you sent someone over there cutting down a tree. Town is across the street from my house.
Yeah.
Right in the window.
Yeah, we, we do have crews in tonight.
We have some, we have some branches down the street. I got one in my backyard as well, but they started cutting just now. Noisy.
Hopefully not in your backyard. We should be out on the street.
Oh, no, it's out on the street, across the street, but it's.
I'm just joking.
That's where the noise is coming from, if anybody hears. Okay. I got one question for Steve. Steve, I saw those pipes that they were bringing in the Senate tonight. Were they like five feet in diameter?
They're forty-eight inches, yes.
Forty-eight inches. Are, are, those are going up Pauline Street? Is that where?
Yeah, so that's the, those are drainage pipes. They're currently, they started, they set up a ten-foot diameter manhole in last and rink parking lot, actually in the teacher's lot, the old teacher's lot. And they're working their way up Pauline Street to go down Hagman Road into French Square to another large diameter manhole and then work towards the Putnam Street intersection.
They're, they're pretty impressive when you see them up close, how big they are. It's, it's going to hold a lot of water.
It certainly will. We're going to get a lot of capacity in those pipes. Those pipes are replacing ten to fifteen-inch drain pipe. So it's, it's, you know, very significant improvement.
Thanks. Any other questions? Okay, Austin, back to you.
Sure. Just a couple of other quick things, just before like my power totally goes out or whatever. In terms of the library, the building will remain close to the public for the time being. Pickup and drop-off has been going well. The current staffing that is there, the director and assistant director have been able to handle the demand that has come in. And they've also been available to provide people with cards and pins for online ordering and have even been making new library cards if people are sending in pictures of their IDs. So we are working to still distribute materials to the best of our abilities. We're going to be digging into the digital and virtual material availability in the very near future so that we can try to have materials available. I know multiple times in forums concerning the library, there have been concerns about the digital and virtual materials. My first priority was making sure the current staffing for the pickup and drop-off could handle the workload that was presented so far, and they have been able to. Now we're going to work on the digital materials, try to build that out a little bit more. But again, just so the community knows and just so everyone on this council is clear, due to COVID and due to this budget situation, mostly COVID, we are, there are other departments that have been impacted by this. On the council on aging, the building is closed. We have positions that are unfilled in multiple departments that we aren't pursuing filling because of the situation right now. So I completely understand the community is upset about the library. I'm going to be attending the library trustees meeting on Friday, or Thursday, excuse. Thursday or Wednesday, whatever, one of these days, Thursday, I believe, at five thirty. But this, this is a dynamic conversation. We're still working on it. Just today, I introduced all of the department heads to the plans that we're looking at about how we're going to keep staff safe in, inside of our municipal buildings, what we're looking for in terms of sanitation stations and mask policies and things like that in our buildings, what we're going to be looking at for appointment, only type of things of interacting with the public once we're open back up to the public and stuff like that. We are working through this process to build, to bring more buildings online. All of that said, though, the tenor of the discussions about this has gone overboard at points from my perspective. Using expletives to describe municipal workers on Facebook is kind of unacceptable for a community. Although these people work for the town, they don't work for you as an individual. And the idea that people are going to call out employees of this town because of what they perceive about them, whether it's what's happening at the library or wearing masks in public and things like that. You know, we're all just trying to work. These are our jobs. And this tenor that has not just happened here in Winthrop, it's happening all over the country about what people are looking for their government to do and how we're interacting with each other. Sometimes I just wish people had a little bit more patience for one another and took a pause with some of these things. Again, we're in the middle of a public health crisis and the priority, whether it's the economy, schools, our library, everything, none of that comes back to a normal level without us taking care of the public health issues first. So the priority of my office for this entire time has been the maintenance of the general public health within Winthrop and specifically the employees that work for me. So that has been the priority. That will continue to be the priority. But when people call my office and leave messages about the hours that people are working or their inability to get in touch with someone, again, I'm just asking for patience. The, the world has somewhat fallen apart around us and we are all doing our best. What I'm going to work with Northeastern on is trying to go through all of our metrics that we talked about in the budget to show that we are performing about eighty to eighty-five percent of the same level of service that we have been providing outside of a pandemic that has forced us all to stay home. So I just hope that more people in the community, and many people have been patient with the municipal government, but I just hope there is a little more patience. Although we have made progress, we are still a long, long way from coming back to normal. So you may want to say something and you may be very passionate about it and you may want to say something that you regret. I just ask people to be a little bit more patient. We are all in this together on to call each other names or to think the worst of other people. So with that, I think the library is doing what they can for right now. And we're looking forward to bringing some of that staff back and ramping them back up when we have the opportunity. With that, I believe I have hit everything on my notes.
Thank you, Austin. Anybody have any questions with our agenda? Counsel Christopher?
So on the, my local aid numbers that were reported, I was under the assumption that the state was only doing, budgeting a couple of months out. What you just reported to us, is that the amount of money for a short amount of time or is that the allotment that we're going to get over the entire year?
Yeah. Anna, do you want to go ahead?
Yeah, so they actually came to a, a resolution for the whole year on that piece of the budget. So that's outside of the rest of the budget. So when they, when they finally resolve to, to land on their budget for the, for the state for the year, they'll have to take into account that they've already spoken on this piece of it. That it's a resolution on what the, we've already received updated cherry sheets from them. Basically, these numbers are level funding with FY twenty, so no increases, just level of what we received last year. Based on feedback we had had during the budget process with calls with the state and others, we were anticipating likely much more drastic adjustments. So we had taken for the Winthrop budget a cut to FY nineteen with a little bit more. And so this is beneficial to us in that if, if the council approves the, the motion that we intend to, to bring forward next week, it will help, it'll help with our use of that rainy day fund money, which will go a long way to balance, ensuring our budget is in balance.
So at least from, from the state perspective, we can't, we don't have to, I guess, we, we're certain on those numbers. There's not going to be any fluctuation in, in that.
So I guess, how do I say this? I don't know that there can ever be a hundred percent certainty from the state in terms of those numbers. But the, if for some reason when the state finally passes a budget, if, say the state passes a budget, they assume those specific cherry sheet numbers, the local aid numbers. And say they get into like February and the budget is just unrealistic based on the appropriations that were made and if revenues are, you know, are horrible. So the governor can do a So the governor can do a called 9C cuts. There are provisions that allow the governor to take unilateral cuts to the budget, but then there are other provisions where the governor needs to ask the legislature to vote on certain cuts. So locally, especially chapter 70, those local aid cuts cannot be reduced unilaterally by the governor, so that would have to go through a process also with the House and the Senate. So it would have to be, the situation would have to arise that things are so dire that they would go back on this commitment and it would have to be a, all three, all three parties, the executive and the legislature would have to vote on that. We'll have to approve that, if I should say.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Counsel Terry?
Hey, just a quick point, I think when the town manager at the beginning of his, of his comments, I think he might have cut out a little bit when he talked about, I think he was talking about that Miller Field that has been open since last Wednesday. And, and again, thanks to Lister and Sean for, for making this work really well and for the town manager for helping out with this. So, and I think my understanding is the hours are seven to 10, Monday through Friday, and nine to 12 on Saturday and Sunday. And I think there's been a good amount of people going down there, taking advantage, walking the park and getting on the field a little bit. So I'm very happy that the town manager was able to report that the field has been open since last Wednesday. And I believe it's seven to 10 weekdays and nine to 12 in the weekend.
That is correct.
And I hope everybody uses it, get some exercise, wear your mask, be safe when you're close to people there. Okay, that did, Austin, anybody else have any questions for Austin? Hearing none, I'm gonna accept that report and move on to the school department update. School committee met last night, Monday, August 3rd at 6:00 PM. And at the meeting, the superintendent brought forward three possibilities of school opening. They were a full opening in-person school, which, which it could have done at 24 students to a class at three feet apart. Then there was a hybrid session, which is half in and half out. And then there was a full remote recommendation that also could have worked. But the superintendent, after having met with the Department of Public Health and DESE, has decided to recommend to the school committee a hybrid approach. And that's a phased-in approach. And what the phased-in approach that was voted by the school committee last night is that there will be two groups, a blue group and a gold group of students. The blue groups would meet at school, would be in school on Mondays and Tuesdays. The gold group would be in school on Thursdays and Fridays. And when the gold group's not in school, they would be on remote. And when the blue group is not in school, they would be on remote. If, all of them will be on a remote on Wednesdays, it will be completely remote learning on Wednesdays. Every student in the system will have a device, if they need a device, and we're gonna make sure that they have that. Special education and high need students will be working and in school four days a week, being off Wednesday with like the rest of the students. This situation is gonna go on until it's reevaluated by the state. State is going to reevaluate all of these situations on Friday, November 13th and see if this will be a possible phase in back to full in-person school schooling. But the current situation with the DESE, the State Department, is that until September 14th, there will be no school sports, no MIA sports. On September 16th, Winthrop School will start with an orientation on the 16th. And the groups, the blue group and the gold groups will get orientated on September 16th and 17th. And on September 21st, this program, this hybrid program will start with blues meeting on Monday and Tuesday and the golds meeting on Thursday and Friday. And the school committee endorsed this program unanimously, the school committee endorsed this program unanimously at the recommendation of the superintendent and our Board of Health. Are there any questions? All right. Superintendent Howard has put this all online. There is a presentation there that you can go on and click through and see how it works. It will be further details on it put out, but it's pretty intense of the report that she put out last night to the school committee. And that is available online for any parent or anyone that would like to see it. Counsel President?
Yes. I would just like to thank you for those comments and just say that, you know, to Lisa, the state's putting incredible amount of responsibility and pressure on these school superintendents. And I know it's gotta be an incredibly difficult job to do. I mean, you're dealing with public health, you're dealing with, you know, potential devastating circumstances. And I think the superintendent and her team did an admirable job to come with that recommendation. And I know it wasn't done lightly. I know the school committee didn't vote in it lightly. And it's challenging times, which hopefully we'll get through in a, sometime in the near future. But, you know, I think not everybody's gonna agree with, with any of the recommend, you know, with recommendations, it's very tough and you're dealing with children, which is, makes it even more hard. But, you know, I wanna just commend the superintendent for her hard work and dedication to the town.
Thank you, Jim. And I do appreciate Superintendent Howard's hard work and the entire task force that was working on the reopening. They did a great job and it showed in the report that they made last night to the school. Okay, under all business, we have one motion, and that is a motion to designate Winthrop Town Hall as the early voting site. Who's making that motion? Austin, did you bring that motion to the council?
Uh, yes, I did, I believe so.
Has been made to designate the Winthrop Hobby Town Hall as the early designation site. Let me actually read this for you. And the motion reads, it's submitted by Calum Vitale, and I have a second on this? Second. The second by James Lutteiri. The town council, in accordance with 950 CMR 47 dot 04 and 950 CMR 51, designates the Winthrop Town Hall as the early voting site for the town of Winthrop for the time period that runs from August 22nd, 2020 till August 28th, 2020. Is everybody clear on that motion? The actual location will be in the hobbies room and it is being outfitted to be a safe place for women to vote. All right, the motion before us, any discussion on the motion? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? Please take a roll call vote. All those in favor of designating Winthrop Town Hall in the hobby room as town of Winthrop voting site for August 22nd to August 28th, please answer yes to the roll call.
Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Flotkat?
Yes.
Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte? Vice President Lutteiri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is committee appointments and reappointments. And I am going to appoint the final three people to the Diversity and Inclusion Committee. And those three people are John Morgan of 13 Golden Drive, 26th, so who was online earlier. Next one is Citi Belletti of 263 Winthrop Street. And the final one is Suzanne M. Matutigallo of 40 Sunnyside Avenue. Now that concludes the nine-member diversity committee. I believe everyone there is either a member of a protected class or close to being a member of a protected class. And I would ask Denise Quish to set up their first meeting for them for next Tuesday night. And see if we could set up a webinar or a Zoom meeting for that committee.
Okay, will do.
All right. And I think you've got to finish notifying the ones that have not, because I think most of them have been sworn in, there may be these last three or not and one other. But hopefully we can have a meeting next Tuesday and I hope Austin and I can attend that meeting.
Right, okay, very good.
All right, Austin, you there?
I will be there.
Okay. All right, those are the appointments. The next thing on the agenda is a discussion to name the new field house at Miller Field after Anthony Fusillo. And we've been getting inundated with phone calls and rightfully so. Anthony's a great man, he's a good friend of mine, we actually grew up together. And we hung around, drummed together when we were 15, 16 and that age group. And people are interested in having this field house named after him. This is the first time, this has been on the agenda. I think Counsel Lutteiri, you had a motion, is that correct?
I do, Counsel, Counsel President, thank you. You know, the, the negative thing about having early public comments, people steal all your thunder about what you might wanna say. And, you know, I thank all the people who support Tony and, you know, I had a lot of things to say about Tony, which I think Vinnie and Mark took most of the thunder away. But, you know, I've, to a lot of, it's incredible that, that we have a petition in a town of 18,000 where, you know, a couple of thousand of them are kids and you have 2,000, over 10% of the population sign a petition to, you know, to ask for this. And like I said, Vinnie and Mark said a lot of incredibly kind and truthful things about Tony. And, you know, a lot of the catchwords I hear when, when I hear people talking about Tony and is, is obviously being a coach, a mentor, an incredibly, incredible work ethic, a great friend, a role model. And those are pretty kind things to say about someone and that's, that's the way people feel about it. But I mean, I think there's a kinship that's built. You know, obviously over the 35 years, he coached here and, and his whole life being here. And, and I think the town just wants to say thank you. And I was also able to talk with Speaker DeLeo. And, and I know the speaker has a tremendous amount of admiration for Tony and wanted to let me know that he wholeheartedly supports this dedication of the field house to Tony Fusillo. And he talks about, he had told me about the people throughout the state and especially in the Northeast Conference that he's talked to over the years and what great respect they have for Tony as a coach and as just a, just an incredibly nice man. And I thought that was extremely kind of the speaker to let me know that. So I do have a motion that I would like to refer the naming of the new field house to the Anthony Fusillo Field House and have that referred out to the memorials committee.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, and in our rules, when the memorial committee was first put into our rules in December 8th of 2007, 13 years ago, we appointed a memorials committee consisting of five members, including the veterans agent, a member of the Winthrop Historic Commission, and three citizens of the town, which will have public safety experience, they serve staggered three year terms, and they're charged to bring forward, either on their own initiative or on suggestion, suitable names for memorializing town property, other than property under the jurisdiction of the school committee. But hopefully that's gonna change because I think every single building in this town anywhere, remember whose jurisdiction it's under, should go through the town memorials committee. A person whose name is brought forth by the committee will be of exemplary character and will have made significant contributions to the community. Properties will, generally speaking, not be named for living persons. A primary responsibility of the committee will be to determine, before bringing forth a name, whether or not a property should be named or renamed. All right, further that nomination will be forwarded by the town manager to the council for ratification. So therefore, a motion's been made to send this to the memorials committee for them to come back with a recommendation by our next meeting to, so that we can vote on the renaming, on new naming. And I've already heard from two members of the memorials committee who checked in. Mary Lou Osborne said to notice that she'd like to have this go to the memorials committee. We heard from Moses Mathicella, who's on the committee, and I think Chief Flanagan as well is on the committee, along with Richard Gay and Julie Bono from the Historical Commission, Historical Commission. So all those in favor of sending this to the memorials committee, please say yes when the roll call is called.
Counsel Ruggiero?
Yes.
Counsel Flotkat? Counsel DeMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Christopher?
Yes.
Counsel Honan?
Yes.
Counsel LaConte? Counsel Farino?
Yes.
Vice President Lutteiri?
Yes.
President Boncory?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I, can I say something, President Boncory? He got me there. Just, as you know, getting 150 signatures just to run for office, and Tracy, you know this too, is, is a pain in the neck. To get 2,000, over 2,000 votes or signatures on a petition is, I, I've never seen that in this town. You know, I played for Coach Fusillo. I don't, I don't think any, I don't know if any of you guys have, but, you know, I'd never, I'd never say this to him personally, but, you know, as a team, we used to, when we talked about him, we used to call him Daddy Fuse because that's how much we cared about him, that's how much he meant to us. What you're hearing from people tonight is real. We love this guy, he's our family, he's our, he's, he's one of us. And, you know, it, there's never been a bigger no-brainer for the memorial committee. And I wanna see this vote take place in two weeks. And I'm already calling it the Coach Fusillo Field House because that's what it is. He deserves it, it's his, and that's what it should be. Thank you.
Okay.
Counsel President?
You should have stayed with the no, Rob. You should have stayed with it. Steve, go ahead.
Could I just request that all the correspondence that the council has received on this topic be forwarded to the memorials committee?
Yes.
Before their meeting so they can bring that into their decision-making process.
Yes, most of them went through Denise, but if any of you got any individual notices, you can send them over to the memorials committee as well. I know I got some individual ones. Okay. Moving on, the next thing is TSEC Committee Discussion. I believe Counsel Ruggiero has put together a motion. Is that correct?
Uh.
Counsel Christopher?
I think Counsel Christopher, perhaps.
Okay, I think it's Counsel Christopher. You have a motion that was submitted by TSEC?
Yes.
Want to read it?
Um, sure. So I just, in, by way of background, this is sort of what we talked about at the beginning of the meeting, merging the Transportation Advisory Committee with TSEC. And so I started this process and started doing some research to figure out the best way that we could put this into our, our ordinances and bylaws. And I actually found that there is no place in our ordinances or charter where TSEC currently lives. It was originally established as a managers committee in 2006. And I wanna thank Chief Delahanti and Mike Di Luiso for helping me with doing some of this research. And so the committee also originally had eight members, so it wouldn't be too far out of precedence to be increasing the amount of people on TSEC and having more of a, a community voice on that board. I think over the past couple of years, it's become one where we have directors of more of the, of the various departments in town. But historically, we did have. But historically, we did have more people from the community as well. So I'm going to make a motion to actually formalize the, the TSEC Committee. And, and I ask that it gets sent to the Rules and Ordinance Committee because what I'd like to do is invite the, invite the various directors or designees from their, from their respective departments to come to the meeting so that we can get, so that we can either modernize or do whatever and make sure that we have these ideas that are representative of the direction that they want to go with the committee. And I think the overall rationale is this is that the Transportation Advisory Committee and TSEC did so much that overlapped that it makes sense to have those two groups at the table. So my motion is going to read right now. And like I said, I, I hope that we can sort of fill this out a little bit better in committee. But what, but what my motion is going to be, that I move to amend the Winter Town Council rules to within Rule Nine, Section A of the Town Council's Rules and Procedures, to strike the text in Section F in its entirety and add in its place the following: Transportation Safety Advisory Committee. This committee shall be a seven-to-nine-member committee made up of the directors or the designee from the Police Department, the Fire Department, the Department of Public Works, the Parking Department, and between three to five members of the community. And that's going to be, that, that's my motion. Somebody second that?
Second.
Thank you.
All right, and I will refer that to the Rules and Ordinance Committee to report back at our next meeting with a motion to be voted on. I don't, we need, I don't need a motion to send it to the committee. All right. The next motion we have on, under our new business is a Town Council vote to amend Section Ten Sixteen Ninety of the Town Ordinance. And this motion came to us from TSEC. And it's been a while in TSEC. It came to us, the Town Council accepted the recommendation of the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee to reinstate a previously posted no parking zone on George Street that was removed due to lack of an accompanying ordinance by amending Section Ten Point One Six Point Zero Nine Zero of the Town Ordinances to insert the following into the table of streets where parking is prohibited. And the name of the street is George Street North Side, location from a point sixty-four feet westerly of the intersection of Bowden Street to a point a hundred feet westerly of the intersection of Bowden Street. All right, and I am going to refer that to the Rules and Ordinance Committee where it's an amendment to an ordinance. Okay, so, Council Christopher, you and your committee have two issues before you to bring back to us at the next meeting.
Great.
Is there any other new business? Does anyone have any other new business? Hearing none, I will open up once again for public comment. Again, the public comment number is three, one, two, six, two, six, six, seven, nine, nine. The ID number is eight, seven, four, five, zero, nine, five, three, nine, five, one. Okay, I see forty-nine participants. Is anybody ready a public comment, Larissa?
Yes, Karen Chavez.
Hello, Karen, are you there?
Am I unmuted?
Yes, you are, Karen.
Good evening. I hope everybody is well.
Thank you. You as well.
My first comment is I'd like to apologize to the DBW. Several people had complained to me that they were unable to get the bulk stickers for their trash. So last week, when I had the chance, I spoke to the Assistant Town Manager, Anna Friedman, and told her that. She said that she would look into it. Well, evidently it was some sort of a phone glitch. But to my own personal experience, on Monday, yesterday, I called the DBW at ten-thirty in the morning and asked for three stickers. And they were in my mailbox at twelve-thirty. So I have to apologize. Please, I am sorry that that happened. The other thing is, on Monday, July twentieth, the fire chief called me because I had sent a question about a fire hydrant that was covered across the street from my house. So after he explained to me what was going on, I then spoke to him about a piece of abandoned property at eighty-three Lincoln Street. I live at sixty-three. The property had trash piled up outside. The front was distressed, and I knew it was bank-owned. They also have an above-the-ground pool in the backyard. The chief said he would look into it immediately, and he did. And I have to tell you, today I found out that the property is going to be boarded up. I, I'd like to thank that committee. I think they're, the Abandoned Property Committee, I'm not exactly sure what their title is. And I know that the chief is on it, but I don't know who else is on it. I just want to thank them for that. Living where I live, we have had more animals going through our backyard than we've had in the last two or three years. By that, I mean skunks and raccoons. So gosh only knows, they might be living underneath that above-the-ground pool. And I don't know what the inside of that house looks like. I really don't want to know either. If they're boarding it up, it has to be pretty bad. But again, thank you.
Thank you, Karen. But I think this country raccoons and unfortunately opossums are everywhere around. I, I see them every night going by my yard. Anyone else on?
Yes, we have Alex Smith.
Alex.
Good evening, am I unmuted?
You are.
Good, Alex.
Awesome, great. Good evening, Mr. Council President and the council. Thank you for taking my call here. I just wanted to kind of echo my support for Coach Tony Fusillo. As Mr. Lutieri said, you know, Mark and Vinnie and Rob have done a great job tonight, you know, showing the accolades that Coach has. Real quickly, I think as, as, just a quick background of myself, I was a class president for the class of two thousand and four, and I was captain for Coach Fusillo in two thousand and three. And not saying that I'm older, but as you do get older, I'm a father now, you can certainly appreciate the people who have been in your life, who have shown you the way to do things, that right, show you the right way to do things as a leader with work ethic. Just looking back with my time with Coach Fusillo as a captain, it certainly has molded myself and helped me mold, I think, to be someone that, you know, can, can work hard for their family. And it's certainly, I know I'm not the only one that thinks that, who wouldn't be probably where they are today if it wasn't for, for Coach Tony Fusillo. So again, I just want to, I know it's going to the Memorial Committee. So I, you know, thank, thank you for that. And we just really are much appreciated, my family and the other members of the Viking Football Family that Rob talked about for, for all, for all he's done. And we're looking forward to that ceremony. So thank you.
Thank you, Alex. Anyone else on? Larissa?
Yes, we have Suzanne Leonard.
Hello, Suzanne.
Oh, good evening, everyone. Thanks for having me. I'd like to talk just a bit about the library. I don't know if Town Manager Faizan is still on this call or not. I know he's having some issues. So for the past six weeks, I've been kind of involved in watching what's been happening with the library. And there really is a lack of transparency surrounding the pickups and drop-offs, which, as you all know, are still being connected by two pretty anemic library staff. And secondly, the refusal to negotiate with the now-laid-off workers. This has been going on for weeks. As I hope you've seen, we've written letters to the transcript. The furlough workers have written, now laid off, excuse me, workers have written letters to the transcript. Town Manager Faizan has just honestly categorically refused to negotiate with those furloughed workers. And so we are planning a read-in on the Town Council alone on Thursday before the trustees' meeting to show our support for the furloughed workers and to really say that the way the town is currently treating the library staff and by virtue, the people who rely on the library for services is, you know, in my opinion, really sad, really sad and actually quite reprehensible.
Suzanne, Suzanne, unfortunately, the Town Council does not get involved in the negotiations that the Town Manager has with any of his employees. The employees directly are responsible to the Town Manager only and not the council.
Right.
He is responsible.
But our attempts to communicate with the Town Manager, as you understand, have been pretty much stonewalled. So I just want you all to be aware that this refusal of contact and refusal to negotiate has led a large group of concerned citizens and I to try to bring attention to this, to this fact. So.
And, and I understand that you are having a rally or something on Thursday. And then, of course, that is your right. And you have the right to freedom of speech and, and hopefully you have a good turnout.
Again, I just, I, I understand. I understand that you are not the one who makes these negotiating decisions. But some of you, I know, signed a letter to the Town, to the Town Manager explaining that you would not release or that you would not allow the funds for those furloughed workers to be allocated elsewhere. And I want to thank those counselors who wrote that letter. Because as I understand it, you do, you do control the budget. So I would just ask you, and any power that you do have, to recognize that this is an urgent issue for the town. And it's particularly urgent issue for some of our most vulnerable residents. And, you know, the fact that this town doesn't have a functioning library, I think is a real blight on this town when all of the surrounding libraries do. So I know I've probably exhausted my time. But thank you for those of you who are supporting the library. I hope you will come to our read-in, four o'clock, in front of the Town Hall on Thursday. I hope to see all of you there.
Thank you very much, Suzanne. Anyone else on public comment?
Yes, Mike DeLuiseau.
Who is Mike?
Yes.
Okay, Michael.
Good, good evening, sir.
Congratulations, Karen.
Thank you very much. I actually apologize, I missed the beginning of the meeting because of that. It was brought to my attention, there was a brief discussion earlier about visitor placards in Point Shirley.
Yes.
I just wanted to clarify that by ordinance, Ten dot forty-eight dot zero four zero, the visitor plaque is section of the ordinance, visitor placards are only valid in the vicinity at the address to which they are issued. So Point Shirley visitor placards would be valid down the point. But if somebody lives in the center, would not be able to take their visitor plaque and park in Point Shirley.
But somebody visiting, that, living down the center should have their own winter sticker.
Correct.
Available to be there. And someone at the point has a guest, they can use the visitor pass.
That is correct. It just, it has to be a visitor pass from that vicinity. It can't be one from across town.
Thank you, Michael, and good luck with the twins.
Thank you very much. I'm going to need it.
Yeah, you are.
Check in with the senator, see how it goes. All right. Any, any further comments?
Yes, I believe this is Roe.
It is I again. I just want to.
Senator Kelly, our Town Veterans Agent, please. Go ahead, Roe.
She muted herself.
Can you hear me now? I'm good?
Yes.
Okay, sorry. I will bring this to my committee. However, I need something in writing to present it. So if that gentleman who was speaking earlier, who gathered all those signatures, could just write a letter to me, or to the Memorials Committee, I would greatly appreciate it. And I'm in my office just about every day, so I'm easily accessible. They could give it to Denise or give it to you, Mr. Town Council President Boncorrie, and then you could give it to me, it doesn't matter. But I will have Denise help me set up a Zoom meeting.
Okay, because Denise does have it. I have received an email with a copy of the petition that you want to. And we'll make sure you get all of that.
President Boncorrie, in, in, in real time, I just got a text from the person who sent that. And he's saying that he will send it and he'll visit her personally if he wants, if she wants to. But that'll go over.
Thank, thank you, everyone. I appreciate it.
Council President, there's a few call-in folks. I just want to remind people, they can hit star nine if they want to use the raise your hand feature through your phone. Don't know if people know how to do that, but I will check with. This is caller number thirty-nine-three.
That, that sounds good.
We'll try the caller with the last digits, five-five-five. Do you have any public comment? And I'm just going to check with Mr. Morgan one more time. Mr. Morgan, do you have any public comment?
Yes, yes, I do. Again, John Morgan, Precinct Four, thank you for appointing me to, to, to the committee. I will do my utmost to, to bring a voice to that for the disabled people.
Thank you.
And I just want to thank you again.
And that's what I expected, that you would be a great voice for the disabled people that are protected classes and have been discriminated against. And I think you can help straighten this out. Thank you.
Yes, I have a good teacher in Jerry DeFranz.
Thank you for volunteering.
You're very welcome. And I hope everyone has a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan.
Any other public comment?
There's a call-in user, I'm going to, no, they disconnected. So I think that's it.
Okay. Hearing none on the public relations. We have given their citation to Sister Jane. And I just want to let everybody know there's going to be a parade in honor of Sister Jane on Sunday, the ninth, when she's going to be leaving to go to another state shortly thereafter. If you'd like to participate, I guess the meeting kickoff point is the Winter High School at one PM on Sunday, August ninth, to be in the parade to honor Sister Jane. Are there any other public comments of any Councilors? Councilor Ruggiero?
Yes, Council President, I just have a quick message to read. Dear Winter High School, Class of Two Thousand and Ten, due to unforeseen circumstances regarding the ongoing, the ongoing COVID- nineteen pandemic, our ten-year reunion will be postponed until two thousand and twenty-one. The class officers have come to this decision with everyone's safety in mind. We will see you all next year. Be safe and well from your Class of Two Thousand and Ten officers. So unfortunate news there, but we think it's for the best. And if anyone's listening, please spread the word. Thank you.
Hate to admit it, but the Class of nineteen-sixty-five was also due to have a reunion this next month. And that has been canceled and will not be held again until next year. But when you talk about the Class of Two Thousand and Ten, I feel embarrassed talking about sixty-five.
We cover a wide range, Council President.
We cover, yes, we do. Is there any other announcements? Michael.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank Superintendent Lisa Howard and the school committee for doing an absolutely incredible job and, and, and getting our kids back into school in a hybrid model. It's been incredibly difficult for them. I'm, I know they've worked tirelessly, and I just want to thank them. Because, you know, for me, knowing that my kids are going back to school as a father on September sixteenth, I mean, that's, that means the world to me. So thank you, Superintendent Howard and school committee.
Again, orientations sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen, school staff of twenty-first. Okay, any other announcements? Hearing none.
Nope, I have one.
Yes.
If we could please refer back to new business. We never took a roll call on Councilor Christopher's ordinance.
What do you mean?
Motion.
I think it was sent to committee, Denise.
We sent it to committee. Sent it to committee, and I just sent it to committee.
You just sent it straight to committee.
Yes.
You sent it straight to committee. Okay, gotcha.
All right, any other announcements? Hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion by Councilor DiMarco, seconded by Councilor Farino. Please answer yes to the roll call. If you're in favor.
Councilor Ruggiero.
Yes.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council DiMarco.
Yes.
Council Christopher.
Yes.
Council Honan.
Yes.
Council Farino.
Yes.
Council LaConte. Vice President Lutieri.
Yes.
President Boncorrie.
Yes.
Thank you.
Meeting is adjourned. Everyone, please be safe. Follow the protocol for COVID. And we want to see you here again next month, or next, in two weeks. Thank you. Be safe.